As a park and recreation commissioner, and sixteen years as a city council member, have given me a picture and understanding of the inner workings of LATV. I understand and have knowledge of LATV's previous financing and budgets, and am very aware of the challenges to LATV for the type of funding the commission and council have dealt with in the past few years.
Thank you.
Hi Marilyn. Why do you want to serve on the Cable Commission?
Thank you Troy. I would like to see LATV return to the type of studio it was years ago. It has struggled for the past few years, and I think there is still a great opportunity for LATV to be the type of local channel that our community grew to love and use. I fully realize that financial constraints have led to the troubles that LATV has had in the past several years, but I think that some creative thinking, working with businesses, nonprofits, our school district, and community members will help and can help to recreate a very viable TV channel for this community. I feel that I have leadership skills to help with this commission move forward with the development and outreach of a plan to bring LATV into the new electronic and digital age.
Thank you.
What do you think are the most significant issues facing the Cable Commission today?
Financing. And that leads, of course, to the ability to purchase the type of technology, cameras, and so on and so forth that are needed, and that, you know, stifles some of the ability to produce new programming. In the past, cities were able to provide these types of services to the community free of charge or were funded by franchise fees. Unfortunately, we live in a different financial environment, as you all well know, with your budget meeting this evening. Cities can no longer fund these types of programs, and franchise fees are very limited. So I think the public understands that. And I do know that there are many nonprofits in the community that have sent letters to LATV and the city council indicating their eagerness to partner with LATV and pay for the opportunity to learn and to produce their own shows at their own expense. They're just waiting for the OK to proceed, and I think there are many businesses that are eager to join in that same type of thing.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, hi Marilyn. Thank you for being here. In your own words, what do you feel are the role of the Cable TV Commission is in Los Alameda's?
Thank you. We're a very small community, as you know, and most small communities do not have their own TV station. I think this is one of the great reasons we all want to live here. We are very unique. We have a great opportunity to continue to provide this community, the nonprofits, businesses, and residents, a very good form of communication. And communication is the key to most successful endeavors. The Cable Commission is the steward of these endeavors. The commission shoulders the challenge to keep quality programs on Channel 3 for the least amount of money while keeping the highest quality of programming.
Thank you.
Hi Marilyn. When considering actions by the Cable Television Commission, how do you balance the interests of the entire community against the likes or dislikes of yourself, your friends, or your neighbors?
Anytime a person is elected or selected to a public commission like this, their main concern has to be what is best for the community. Their own personal feelings, those feelings of their family, neighbors, and so on, have to take the backseat. Sometimes decisions have to be made that aren't personally advantageous to the person on that commission, but you have to look at what's best for the overall of the community and the commission that you're serving. Thank you.
Thank you Marilyn. Would you like to make a statement of any kind of how you, what you see in the future for LATV or anything like that?
Well, I think it's very interesting. I attended a breakfast, the Chamber of Commerce breakfast, last Friday, as several of you did, and one of the speakers, or two of the speakers, were the consultant team that you hired to look at LATV and how to improve it. And I was so interested because they spoke about almost the exact model that LATV was years ago, and similar to what I just spoke about. Having the school students as learning how to produce programs, how to film programs, having instruction for people in the community on becoming producers. We had great producers in the community in the past, like Althea Miller, Alice Jemsev, just to name a couple. And that was when LATV was just at its prime. And they were talking about the same type of thing, and it was almost as if they had read my mind and they hadn't interviewed me. So I just thought that was really interesting. I think that, again, we just have a real opportunity to bring LATV into the time that we have now. With all of the things that we have, the communications that we have, people still like to see the programming that's on that channel. I hear people all the time talk about the reruns of some of the programs that were done where there were interviews of Mert Parisio with a lot of the old timers, the pioneers of Los Alameda's. And the ability to communicate to our city and surrounding area the events that are happening, for them to keep up with what's going on, see the city council meeting, so on and so forth. I think it's just a very, very valuable thing for our community, and I would be honored to serve.
Thank you. Great.
Good afternoon.
Would you like to make a statement to start, or would you like to go with the questions?
No, let's go for the questions.
All right, Dean?
Welcome back. What strengths, characteristics, or experience do you have in the Cable Television Commission?
Let me preface my remarks by saying I know absolutely nothing about cable TV. And that may be a plus, but I think what I would bring to that commission, or any commission that I might serve on, is my many years of experience, all here in Los Alameda's and various commissions, at the city council, at the planning commission. I've been here for forty-five years, and based upon Marilyn, I'm a newcomer here, but we fought a few battles together over the years and served on several different committees. I started out on the planning commission in nineteen seventy-six, served ten years, went to the city council where I served twelve years, became a member of the supercommittee on transportation, consequently elected to the Orange County Transportation Authority where I served for eight years, got term limited out there, came back to the planning commission for another four years, and then I left that to go to the Los Mar, Los Alameda Sewer District where I served for another four years, and I enjoyed every minute of it. I've been out of action here for five or six years, and I kind of miss my participation in public service, and I have no axe to grind other than try to get back involved again in the community. And I think the Cable TV Commission would be a good place to do that. I have no preconceived notions of, I have no agenda of what I plan on doing great things for the commission, but I think one of the values I bring to any commission is the ability and willingness to listen to both sides of an issue, both the pros and the cons, and after listening, being willing to compromise to reach a conclusion that's the best solution overall.
Thank you Troy.
Good evening Bob. This is almost asking you the same question, because I think you answered most of it, but why do you want to serve on the Cable Commission?
I think I probably referred to that. I've had a burning desire to serve in some capacity wherever I've been. In addition to all my service in the Los Alameda City, I've always served on the church board or whatever church I've attended, and I just have to be involved to be happy. I've been away far too long, and most of you know I lost my wife a few years ago, and that has just left me with some more vacant time that I miss being involved more than ever. Repeating my remarks, I have no preconceived notion of the great things I plan on doing for the Cable TV Commission, but again, willing to listen and learn.
Thank you. Thank you. What do you think are the most significant issues facing the Cable Commission today?
Knowing very little about the cable TV industry, I think here in our little city, based upon what I've seen, it sounds like what we need are some more equipment and programs and participation by the businesses and organizations in the city. I think the Cable TV Commission has done a great, good job in bringing us the program that they have. They're limited by their resources, and consequently, I don't get to watch as much of the cable TV as I would like to, only because we have so many repeat programs, and I'd like to get those repeat programs replaced with some new programs sponsored by businesses or organizations that have the funds to sponsor a program.
Thank you. In your own words, what do you feel is the role of the Cable TV Commission in Los Alameda's?
Well, I probably perceive it as a little larger organization than Los Alameda's, and based upon what I see, limited participation, I would like to see Rossmore, Cypress, Garden Grove, Seal Beach, and the programs that we've seen broadcast from time to time on a larger scale. If we have the facilities and the wherewithal to do that, realistically, if we like it or not, each one of those cities, we're all part of the city, and the more we get to of the county, and the more we get to know about each one of the various cities and communities in our surrounding neighborhood, the better it's going to be for all of us, I think. I think we have the ability to do it. I've been impressed with what I've seen on the, on most of the programs, and I think we have the wherewithal to do even a better job.
Thank you. Sheldon?
When considering actions by the Cable Television Commission, how do you balance the best interests of the entire community against the likes or dislikes of yourself, your friends, or your neighbors?
I think I can answer that very honestly and squarely. After you sit on a commission and sit around a table like you guys are doing now, and I've done that at so many different levels, that if you don't listen to all sides of the issue and come up with what's best for the community, my own personal desires and goals are second to what's best. And that can only happen if we have the majority of a commission that is willing to discuss all the issues and listen to the experts and the people who can bring the technical knowledge. I think we can provide the leadership by listening to those who have the technical knowledge, but far and away, it has to be not what's good for me, or not what's good for Los Alameda's, or what's good for the city hall. It has to be what's good for, not only this community, but our surrounding community. And if we can accomplish that, I think we'll be a very well-recognized and appreciated organization.
Thank you. Would you like to make any closing statements?
No, other than saying I've missed being in city hall for these last many years, and I have not participated the way that I should, and I hope to get a chance to do that. I have to preface my remarks, or add to my remarks, by saying that Marilyn and I have served together on various things, and I think you have a very qualified candidate there, too. So I would love to serve, but you guys got a tough choice tonight.
Thank you. Along those lines, and this is totally on the fly, so Kerry, please guide me if it's even possible. You know, I don't, we've never had two more distinguished applicants for a position, and I'd like to ask my colleagues if they would consider going to seven on the Cable Commission. And my first, so the first question is, can I even bring that up without having agendized it?
Let me take another look at the staff report. I don't think so. You could certainly make a motion to approve one, and you could ask the council to agenda this, extend the commission.
Could we delay the vote and then bring it up?
Certainly.
Are my colleagues interested in going to seven, or am I wasting my time?
I'm interested. I definitely think that's a good idea.
So the motion is to continue the appointment to the next regular meeting, or to put on the agenda expansion of the commission to seven.
Yes, and then continuing, continuing this process where they've already interviewed.
And reopen as well as anybody else.
Yeah, we'll have more to respond to.
Is the next meeting soon enough, or do you need staff to leave more time than that?
Is there a posting requirement for how long we have to open up the job to the community?
Wait, you're going to talk about if you're going to advertise?
We can advertise now. Staff reports go out in a week, so it'll be open again for about another week. It would be municipal code modification, so we can keep it open during that time, because it'll be at least sixty days before the change would go into effect anyways. We can keep it open during that time.
Brett, when do you expect the people we hired to come in with their report?
That's scheduled close to the end of June, so it's a ninety-day period. We're about thirty days into it.
So the two would coincide, then, that their recommendations and, okay, so.
They could.
You're still second?
Yeah. Can I just ask some clarification? So based on that, we would have to approve the code, wait for it to go through. We could appoint two people that wouldn't be effective until the code is into effect. And kind of in parallel, there's an open position that then would have a thirty-day posting where we would potentially have another slate if anybody else applied for the seventh role, correct?
I'm not sure I understood all of that. You lost me partly through, but I think the first thing to do is to put on the agenda expansion to seven for a meeting soon. As far as appointment, you can just continue this and maybe continue it again. You can still appoint one to fill the existing vacancy, and then once the seven, the expansion goes into effect, you can be advertising now with the possibility that it'll be a seven member commission, and you'll be in a position to appoint in sixty-some days after the meeting. So I think it all works out, and you don't have to appoint one or the other until you have time unless you want to.
I would offer a substitute motion.
Sure.
That we make an appointment tonight, because this has been vacant, and I think we need someone in there while we're going through the process of expanding it, because I'm not sure, I believe most of these commissions are identified under code, and exactly what modifications and timeframe, so I would prefer not to hold off through that process to go ahead and add the sixth member. This would be the fifth member. So I would like to see us appoint tonight at least one of them with the understanding that the other one stands in line for appointment once the changes is made.
Okay, in a second.
I'll second that motion. I think, I agree with the council member, Grace. I think, you know, and I understand, not that I don't support the intent, okay? I think, let's, I would like to see us get the appointment. I'm very excited about the two candidates. They're both great candidates, I think, for this organization. So move it out, and then in parallel process, the change of the municipal code, I was just looking that up right now. So it would require a code change, which may take a couple of meetings.
So we'll vote on the substitute motion first, and if it passes, then we don't vote on the other one, okay? So all in favor of the substitute motion? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
No.
No. Okay, so it passes three-two. So then Wendy, I guess we'll vote.
I'll pass out the indications of support now. You'll be voting for one position.
But I guess relative to the mayor's desire to look at expanding, is that still something we can proceed with, I guess, just a normal agenda item?
Yeah.
We've got two hundred and hundreds requested, but we can't meet on those.
For this, for them, not for this man leading.
As soon as that can put it together, I'm happy.
So can I ask a question before we, I guess before we go down too far down this? I think the intention on the minority on this issue was that we would wait, you know, I, Dean, you might be following the Cable Commission a little bit more closer than some of us. Consultants are in, I mean, is, if we think that these folks are both equally qualified, and I'm just trying to, you know, is there some order of preference, or something that we're specifically looking for now that you are looking for, or do you see everything equal?
I think, based on my introduction of the substitute, both candidates are qualified. One goes on based on the appointment tonight, the other will go on based on the change of the code, if that was clear, and then we'll recruit for that seventh member in the meantime.
Okay.
And considering, I won't say it.
May I point out that you don't have to expand the commission to have both candidates appointed. You can always remove a number of the commission and keep it at five.
Okay. Thank you.
We already tried that.
Did you vote?
Yeah. Whoever doesn't win, I hope you're okay with waiting for sixty to eighty minutes. Thank you.
Counsel, we have three indications of support for Marilyn Poe and one indication of support for Robert Walstrom. Need a motion in a second to appoint the highest.
Excuse me, was one blank?
One was blank, yes.
I'll move, as the vote went, three-one abstention, Marilyn Poe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Bob. Thank you.
They're not getting off that easy, Bob.
That's a joke coming along with me.
What did you think about the, I guess, what you presented?
Well, like I said, I thought it was very interesting. First of all, the old saying, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Why did we fool with it? It was working fine. And it was just, the only thing that was wrong with LATV was the loss of the franchise fees and the money. And when they were talking about, they were talking about it, I'm going, oh my gosh, what did you do? Go back and read how it used to be run? Because that's how it was run.
I'm hoping you can agree with that.
Okay, on to the Los Alamos. I was getting that deep voice I always wanted, you know? We're going to move on to the Los Alamos Unified School District City Working Group Committee. Accept public comment at this time?
Good evening, mayor and council members. I don't need to.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you very much for letting me speak in public comment. My name's Diana Hill. I'm the resident of Los Alameda's, and I'm president of the school board. And I came just to say that we really appreciate this opportunity to go, to have an ad hoc committee with the city. This city is very important to our school district, is very important to our students and to our citizens, and we live very closely together sometimes on top of one another. And we need to have those opportunities to be able to discuss the things that come up that relate to both of us. I respect that your job is to make sure that our community is safe and that our residents are well taken care of, and our job is to make sure that our students and the school district is well taken care of. And so I appreciate having that opportunity to be able to come and talk about those things together. And I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that we appreciated you going extra miles to try to figure out how to make this committee work so that it worked for everybody involved. And I also wanted to say that we had, at the beginning of the year, I had come and said that we were going to try to have a school board member at each meeting. As with you, we are exceptionally busy, and that hasn't always worked out well, but one of the things that we have done is that we've decided to have one of our students be an ambassador. So you'll start seeing a student come to certain city council meetings and speak in public comment and tell you what's going on within that district as well, if we cannot send a board member. So I just wanted to let you know that and say thank you very much, and I appreciate you putting this on your agenda.
Thank you. Okay. I kind of see this as a consent calendar item. Does anybody want to discuss it?
I only want to discuss it because I have had discussion with another member of the board, and my discussion with that member indicated that, based on what we've been told by the city attorney, is that we can't have an open-ended ad hoc. If we do, then it becomes a standing committee. And so we can avoid the standing committee by having ad hocks based on topic. And so this one has the topic of the 2015 traffic study for Los Alameda's High School, McAuliffe Oak Middle, and Alameda's Elementary. That doesn't, in doing that action, and it also points, suggests appointment of the two previous people to that ad hoc committee, it does not preclude us from appointing another ad hoc on a different topic simultaneous, or when this topic is finished, this ad hoc goes away, and then we open up another ad hoc based on any issue that happens to come up, so that we will have the ability to have continuing dialogue in an ad hoc fashion.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Can I get a staff report? I guess not being on the ad hoc, not fully understanding the feels, you know, what the purpose of going back and forth, I think just be helpful for me and maybe the community to understand, you know, I've been on ad hocks till the cow came home, I mean, a ton of them, and I've never been on this one. You know, we've went through a lot of changes, we've had some issues with the school district. So what is the story of why we're doing this and we're changing direction? Because I'll be honest, I don't know what the traffic planning, traffic study plan that we're talking about. It's interesting, I mean, but it seems like something you could always put on an agenda anywhere in the city. We should have an ad hoc for the hospital after this. So I don't understand the course of direction change, and, you know, and I'll be honest, to take it back even a step further, I don't understand why we went to having this be meetings that we wanted to have noticed, because what I've been hearing informally was that, you know, the school district really was frustrated with the fact that we were having officially meetings noticed that were transparent, they were documented, meeting minutes were produced. Now we want to go back from we don't want that anymore, we want to have something that happens behind the scenes and not so public. You know, I had a hard time when we shifted there, now we're shifting back, and we're going to make up topics from here forward so we can have individual discussions. Help me understand this, because I, it doesn't- Help me understand this, because it doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, I'll take a crack, and then with city attorney's help here, too. Back in December 2014, the council at that time determined to go from what was an ad hoc committee to a standing committee to meet the Brown Act requirement of, as you mentioned, Mayor Protem Edgar, the posting requirement, the making it open to the public, and having a standing committee that lasts for more than just a limited time period. And so we went to that. The council determined that back December 2014. We went to a standing committee, we had our first working group meeting with the school district and the city. Shortly thereafter, there were some concerns expressed at that working group meeting by a couple of board members, and we've heard other concerns expressed that wanted to go back to a flexible ad hoc type of format where we could talk about specific topics for limited duration. And so that's what the consideration is tonight, to disband the standing committee that was created in December, and go back to an ad hoc committee, which is a limited duration and specific topics, as council member Gross mentioned. So the two suggested topics, because in working with the city attorney, there's a limit on how many topics, really ideally one or two on an ad hoc, and staff is suggesting two topics, and those are, talk about, discuss the traffic planning implementation of actions in the 2015 traffic study that Dave Hunt can talk about the details of that, if you would like a brief report on that, but that's been taken to the traffic commission. It has implications on traffic circulation in all of the schools in Los Alamos, and we felt that that would be a good topic to talk about with the two groups intact. And the other one that's listed here and suggested is safe routes to school planning. And safe routes to school requires the creation of a grassroots-type group, and this, we think, would be a good topic to bring up back to the ad hoc and talk about with two school board members, two city council members, and come to a kind of a recommendation on how to plan out for future safe routes to schools, which can be implemented to improve routes and help both the city and the school district. So that's what this item is, and that's the history behind that, and that's what the recommendation is, to create an ad hoc.
To clarify, though, the reason we went to a standing committee is legally, an ad hoc committee kind of outlived its useful life. It was no longer an ad hoc committee. So it was, it was not any, we would not have changed if we didn't have to. Okay. Thank you. Sure.
And if I can add to what Brett was saying, and just clarify a little bit. Standing committees are Brown Act committees. Standing committees, you have to post notice, you have to post the agenda, you have to allow the public to participate, and they are what the Brown Act really had in mind for normal meetings of public agencies. And when two agencies get together, the Brown Act still requires that it be complied with. Ad hoc committees are a limited exception. The term isn't used in the Brown Act, but they are a limited exception, and they don't require compliance with posting, public participation, and those kinds of things. They must be for a limited purpose and a limited period of time. When, I gave the opinion that what they, what you were doing with the district looked a lot more like a standing committee than an ad hoc committee, and therefore we should change it so as not to violate the Brown Act. That was implemented, the city was fine with it. From what I've heard, the district was not happy with it. The feedback that I got back was the district did not feel that they should have to talk about everything in public between the city and the district, that they should be able to meet, you know, two council members with two board members without having agendas and minutes and, and public participation. So that's, that's why we're back to ad hoc committees or to consideration of ad hoc committees, limited purpose, limited period of time, limited number of members.
Thank you. Anything?
Yeah. So flexibility is being not noticed, no transparency. I guess my concern with this is the last year, we've been having challenges, the city and the school district, that doesn't seem to be better to be having less documentation at this point. I mean, you know, we went through many years of having a great relationship, and so field fees, SRO officer, all of these things that have come out of the good relationship, quote "ad hoc," and it seemed to shift to the topics. Now we're going towards we need to move away. And like this traffic study, honestly, Dave Hunt, I don't know if you're around here.
I'm here.
Yeah, but, you know, today, we have a traffic commission that listens to the traffic studies and goes through this process, of which the school district, I believe, participates through the traffic commission, which is what there's, you know, not, we would always love the school district's direct feedback, but I mean, by design, just like the planning commission served for the general plan conduit for the school district to participate legally in the process of a general plan. So this, I don't know, you know, to me, with what we're trying to set up here, it just seems like it's against, like, where we've been trying to go with being more transparent. You know, a lot of people in our community, we've had a couple of things within the city of Los Alamos, not the entire school district, that did not go good for our citizens. Some of us up here are hearing about it every week. And what they don't want to hear is they don't want to hear that we want to consummate and change the relationship, we're going to have less transparency and less accountability, because some people in our community don't differentiate between the city council and the school district. It's one government. And so when they have issues, they think that the city council can control that. And so I'm really struggling with this, and I think it's not showing strength in the city, because it doesn't look like we're being consistent with what our message is to the community. So I absolutely don't support switching at this point, because I think we've got a lot of things that we need to work through to rebuild that relationship with the, you know, the school district. I mean, again, in my community where I live, you know, I've got houses falling out of escrow. Every week, people are coming to me that are trying to sell their house, and because they're not getting the value because of a project that went on with the school district, that item wasn't documented in any of these ad hoc committee meetings or the formal process. So I'm, you know, I think right now, this just seems like we're going the wrong direction to try and represent the city, you know, the residents, not the school district, but the actual residents and the quality of life. So I honestly, I just, I don't know why we're switching at this point. And it seems like we're making up a reason now to have an ad hoc. We're going through the motion of reappoint the same people that are on there, except we're just going to call it something different. So, I don't know, I just don't think we're putting our best foot forward. And I'm all for maintaining and improving and enhancing the relationship with the school district. But what did we want? What does the city want? Does this, does this give us a better outcome? I understand the district isn't satisfied with these meetings because they're noticed and we have to go through this, but I don't think we are getting the outcomes out of these meetings. So we ought to be looking at it from the city's perspective of what is our desired outcome for these discussions? Does less documentation have us get a better outcome? I just don't see it. So for that, I cannot support, you know, the staff recommendation on this. Thank you.
Lauren.
Thank you. So city manager, on this type of thing, though, when we do have another topic that might come up, and we would reappoint a, or reform a new ad hoc, right? And then that would be voted on by the five of us here. So in addressing Mayor Protem Edgar's concern, I think the transparency will be enhanced in that fashion, because we will have a deliberate discussion and perhaps direction given to the ad hoc that we're comprised of. And I think in a way, that might work out better for us, because, you know, as representatives on the standing committee, certainly I try to, you know, do what I can to make sure we're in alignment, right? That we bring something back, and when we go forward to the school board in that session, we represent all five of us. So I think we tried to do that. And I think, as you pointed out, there were some things that we just missed. And I don't really like that, and I think that perhaps this other method in which we constitute an ad hoc for specific purposes, and this might be more manufactured than not, but I would expect in the future we'll have very specific topics that come up, and it'll be a slower process. And one of the things, I think, that the, our counterparts, the elected counterparts on the school board, they thought that the standing committee was stifling to them. And, you know, I think the ad hoc will be more stifling, because it'll be slower. Something we might want to meet next month, we will have to put off until we commission an ad hoc to go forward. So I think in that way, it kind of slows things down, it brings a little more, I think, transparency, and I think it gives whoever the two of us are that go to that, it gives us, I think, more definitive marching orders as to what is, you know, the wishes of the council. I think we provide that direction. So in that way, I can support this, because I think we'll have a better, more productive meeting than we've had in the past when I served it. So anyways, with that, I'll turn back to you. Thank you.
Shelley?
Yeah, and being on, you know, when I first signed up for the ad hoc committee, I signed up for an ad hoc committee. And the reason that I was excited about being a part of it is because I had heard in the past, it's a very interactive, two-way conversation that we've had with board members and also staff, and we're able to sit there and have a conversation. When it changed, and I only got to go to a standing committee meeting, I never got to go to the ad hoc committee. So we had some issues come up that week, and because it was a stand committee, we weren't able to even discuss them. And by the time we were able to find a date to do another standing committee to appropriately agendaize and notice that, the issue was over. And it didn't look well on either side. It's like, well, hey, why aren't you talking to us? And I think this way, at least with the ad hoc committee, it can be a little bit more fluid. It is more informal, yes, as far as documentation, but as members of the ad hoc committee, it's our responsibility to come out and report, and whether that means putting on an agenda, because it only takes two of us, good, bad, or indifferent, that's our responsibility. And if the full city council isn't getting that type of documentation on an upcoming agenda, well, then shame on the ad hoc committee for not properly reporting out and sticking things on the agenda that might be of a bigger issue. So that's our responsibility, and I think as we go through the various ad hocs and address specific issues, it's going to allow us to really do our homework on specific issues rather than trying to solve the world's problems in a standing committee that isn't, that's noticed and not noticed, and it's just, it seemed to tie our hands more than anything. And honestly, I didn't get anything out of that meeting, other than we walked out of there going, well, that was 45 minutes of time, I can't get back. So I'd like to try something different. If it does slow things down, then, you know, but that's up to the school district and the city council to work together to find out what's the best resolution. That standing committee, the one that I sat on, didn't work. So either we don't have any kind of formal communication with the, with the school district, or we're going to try something different and see if maybe this works, and if it, if it means tweaking it in the future, so be it, but that, that communication is vital, and we need to make it work somehow.
Can I ask you a question? So the agendas for this ad hoc committee, like I said, in fairness, never served on this, so I don't know. I'm just seeing the results of the process. If it's not, if it's not a Brown Act regulated-type meeting, then the agenda, who keeps track? I mean, usually you have to meet for something specific. Is there rules, like there is in an agendaize meeting, where you have to stay on that topic? You know, we've seen that tonight, you know, Rich tried to pull an audible on the planning commission, and then he, and then tried to recreate the city, and then, but we couldn't because it wasn't on the agenda, but the same thing happens in ad hocs, correct? I mean, you have to kind of stick to the script.
True, but there's, the script, as far as the two or three issues, and I'll defer to the city attorney on how many things we can come up, but we kind of have a good idea of what we need to talk about. And there's issues that maybe we think are real big issues, or real small issues, and because we have this discussion, they might never become issues, or they might turn into something that we need to bring back. That standing committee didn't get us that. We walked away with nothing. I had nothing to report out. So I'm willing to try something, just so I can come back and say, hey, guys, it's a non-issue, or it's an issue, and we need to pursue it as a council. But that standing committee, I wouldn't waste my time on it again.
Okay. Dean, did you get a chance?
Yeah.
I just would, to help Mayor Protem think through this a little bit more. I was on the ad hoc committee for a brief period of time, and requested to be replaced last year, because I was frustrated somewhat with the process. They did start to keep minutes, we did get copies of minutes, as well as there was a reporting out on staff, and this is while they were going through all of the various iterations on fees and lease agreements. My understanding of the January meeting, and I wasn't there, the school board wanted to bring forward some information to us, but couldn't because it was on the agenda, was not on the agenda, and there was no way to alter the agenda since it had been published. By doing it informally this way, they can use the broad scope of safe routes to school or traffic planning as a means of discussion and broaden those topics. There's still going to be minutes taken, and it was rotated between the city one month and the school district the following month, and I think it was opposite of whichever was hosting it. So if we hosted it, the school district took the minutes, if they hosted it, the city took the minutes. I believe this will give more latitude to them in that particular process. And if your concerns are regarding who serves on the committee, maybe we bifurcate this and improve the process of going back to an ad hoc, with the understanding that there's still going to be an agenda and there's still minutes taken. They don't have to be posted to the public in advance, it's not intended to be a public meeting, rather a working-type meeting, which we don't always have the latitude to do. Our workshops are public and broadcast and everything else. And then make the decision on who you feel is appropriate from the standpoint of serving on this ad hoc. If another issue comes up, and it may, if we get further down the road regarding the L A T V thing, to where it's decided that the relationship with the school district needs to be established in order to make that move forward, then maybe we talk about an ad hoc specifically to try and resolve that issue. It certainly wouldn't fall into the scope of these two items. And likewise, if the school district comes up with some topic areas that they want to discuss, they can recommend an ad hoc back through our city staff the same way, and we get the best out of both in the process.
And Troy, I honestly don't think this is a transparency issue. I know the Brown Act is all about transparency. I honestly, and I love transparency, trust me, I tell it like it is as much as I can, this is really about a productivity issue. It's really about a timely issue. I just think that we can come back with more results this way than what I saw in January.
Yeah, again, guys, and Diana, to you two, all due respect, I, you know, the optics on this politically do not look good for the council to be advocating less transparency and a more flexible scenario. Maybe it's where, you know, I'm living, and, you know, the number five question we ask the applicants is, will you put your own interests ahead of the interests of the city, right? But every day, I go outside of my house, I mean, now I drive out of my track, and there's a huge new piece of pavement cut in the entrance that looks a patch, where, you know, so every, there've been a lot of effects in our neighborhood, and a lot of people are really concerned with, you know, the city, what are we doing, how are we doing? So to me, this directionally doesn't help us in trying to make our citizens feel that we are looking out for us. That, you know, the school district's huge, right? Thirty thousand people out there as compared to the small city, there's a lot that they're responsible for. They've got a lot of things, they're trying to maximize their use on their capital expenditure, but it is affecting quality of life issues, and that is putting pressure on us, you know? And I would just say, you know, guys, I hope that you are being sensitive to, you know, with the people, and they're talking to you, because they're definitely talking to me constantly about the concern with what's going on with this relationship, the school district. So forget the details, the big picture is, this doesn't look, I don't even understood, now I do, but I didn't understand why we went to a more formal process, and I apologize if that was a problem and you didn't get the most out of it. My view back in the day is, you know, we got through the SRO, we got through the field fees, we got through all the hard issues in the old, in the old way of doing it. Now, you know, we've switched this thing up, and it doesn't seem to be working, and I'm struggling with this. So I, again, I think that it just, again, it's the optics of this don't look right to the people who, there's a lot of pent-up frustration in our city, specifically on my side of the town, that looks at this and goes, you've got to be kidding. We need to get, you know, if you look at one of the issues specifically, is that there was not enough documentation on a certain issue, and so this is right at the heart of what some of the people have as a wound or a scar that they're still trying to let heal through this process, and it's definitely hasn't healed yet. So I'm just... So I'm just trying to make everybody look, and I, directionally, I see where this is going, so I don't want to prolong it. And like I said, I have no issue personally that I'm trying to take up with the school district. I just want to make you aware, I mean, the people are taking advantage of their right to give us their opinion, and I'm hearing a lot, and I'm sure Warren, you are too. So it's, it's just something to take in consideration. Like I said, I understand what you're trying to do, that's, you know, I, I just can't support this right now.
And honestly, and I don't, I won't belabor this anymore, but we didn't decide saying, hey, you know what, let's try this way. We were told, we need to do it this way. And so I don't know if, if that would have been brought up, if we would have ever changed from an ad hoc committee. Because it did, in December, we were an ad hoc committee, and I raised my hand, I said, let's do this. And then we were told, no, you need to do this. I don't know, like Marilyn said, if it wasn't broke, don't fix it. I don't know if we viewed it as being broken. Our legal advisor did.
Yeah.
And so that's why we fixed it. I don't, we, we didn't fix it because it was a problem.
Yeah, this could be the absolute right thing to do, but right now at the wrong time. That's all I'm saying.
I agree.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to form the ad hoc committee with the recommended two topics. And dissolve the standing committee and bring it to an ad hoc committee. There we go. So disband the district working group standing committee, and form a district city working group ad hoc committee for this upcoming meeting to discuss safe routes to school planning and traffic planning.
Second?
I'll go ahead and second that, and just like a, just a quick discussion topic on the, on the second part of that motion, I may. So on the safe route to schools, Brett, if I recall in the discussion that I had, I think this is something we would view as the school has to take the lead on it, right? Otherwise, it, it's kind of there, there may be some federal grant money or some kind of a grant?
There, there is grant money out there, there's typically, safe routes to schools called a projects.
Right.
And so we did actually, when it was an ad hoc, I think it was an ad hoc, it might have been a standing committee, we did actually talk about this with the working group once.
As a standing, as a standing committee, we talked about that, but prior to that, I think in our discussions, as I understand it, it's not something that we as a city can take on as the sponsoring agency. So I think we, you know, we will go to that, fully supportive of it, but I think it would have to be maybe some grassroots organizations, some parent organization of some type that would take, take that.
Yeah, that's correct.
I want to assure the city that we won't tie up too many resources that I can view on this one. We will support it in the way we can in terms of information, but I think the actual filing, the grants, or the pursuant, pursuit of any kind of more, I guess, widespread support would have to come from some other agency but us.
Yes.
Okay. With that.
Okay. Then, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? No. Eight to four to one. Okay, now we've delayed the budget, we promised people a budget discussion, and we're going to give it to them.
I'll introduce the Director of Administrative Services, Jason Halliwell, to do the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, we're going to give you, I'm going to give you an update on the projected 2014-15 revenues and expenditures of the general fund. I'm also going to ask for feedback from, from the council on how to use the projected surplus for the current year, which is approximately $512,000. And we're going to review the proposed fiscal year 15, '16 general fund operating budget as well. And at the end, we're going to provide an opportunity for the council to give his feedback on the proposed budget cap closure measures at that time as well. So just to kind of recap before I get into 14, '15, I wanted to point out that, you know, in February earlier this year, we provided the council with a preliminary general fund operating budget for 15, '16. And then concurrent with the budget process, we had three standalone meetings, one on March 2nd, March 30th, and April 13th. We reviewed each department's budget at a detailed level, and in addition, we've met with the Budget Standing Committee three times, February 9th, April 3rd, and April 23rd, to also review the general fund operating budget. So today, May 4th, is actually the fifth council workshop involving the proposed fiscal year 15, '16 general fund operating budget. We're planning to provide the council with a seven-year draft CIP, Capital Improvement Program, either on May 18th or possibly June 1st, along with a citywide budget for all funds, and once again, to review the general fund operating budget. And then, of course, the plan is to adopt the annual budget on June 15th at a public So looking at the 14, '15 year, we're projecting, if you look at operating revenues over operating expenditures, it's a 12.5 million over basically 12 million, 35,000. It's a $512,000 operating surplus that we're projecting. And back in February, we projected that surplus to be 493,000, which is fairly comparable. But there has been some changes. Revenues have actually increased by 139,500, which is largely due to red light camera revenue. And also expenditures have increased by approximately 120,000. Over half of that is related to supplemental appropriations. For example, we approved the appropriation for the cable consultants for 18,000, and also the user fee study for 33,000. So looking at revenues in, in the current year, in terms of what we project, this is what's changed. So the budget variance shows what's changed in terms of our estimates since February. And the increase in utility users' tax revenue is up by 30,000, that is entirely related to electric. And sales and use tax revenue is up about 27,000. And as I mentioned previously, red light camera revenue is contributing to that $100,000 increase. I just wanted to comment briefly on the 17,500. That relates to gas tax revenue, which is estimated to be less than what was projected in February. Gas tax revenue is deposited into our gas tax fund, and it's spent on street projects, and then a small portion is transferred to the city's general fund to reimburse the general fund for street maintenance. And so since the amount of gas tax revenue has dropped, less money is available to be transferred to the city's general fund. So on the expenditure side, in the current year, as I mentioned, the projected numbers and the amended budget includes those appropriations that council has approved, like I mentioned, 33,000 on the user fee study and 18 on the cable study. So now, moving into the 15, '16 budget, the current proposed budget includes a budget gap of 210,000. And we have a couple of recommendations to close that gap, and that would actually provide a surplus.
Any free on questions?
Feel free to interrupt if you'd like.
I'm a little confused from the standpoint of budget forecasting. How are 210,000 dollars out? If you're projecting income, revenue-wise, that's all the money you got to spend. So there's where you balance your budget. And I'm speaking specifically to our, not ad hoc anymore, but our standing committee.
But we'd like to be ad hoc.
Well, that's another topic.
We beat that one to death already.
And, and at that particular point, if there are things that we want, or that exceed that amount, rather than being out of budget or out of whack items, items that can be added. Because we're going about this saying, well, we intend to spend this amount, which exceeds what we're taking in. And I think that's what the public has been clamoring about, specifically with the state and, and the federal government. So I, maybe it's just semantics, but I think we're doing this wrong when we're saying, this is what we want to spend, but we're only going to get this much, so where do we find the other money? It's the same kind of answer, but I think we, we go into this balancing it, and then look to see what items prioritized we can fund and do. It just seems to me, we did the same thing last year. And part of that discussion was, you know, advertising on the, on the freeway, which hasn't happened. Part of that discussion was the, the parking district or parking meters, which still hasn't been done. Part of that was the crossing guard expenses, and, and to eliminate them completely, and then put back in half of them. And that still hasn't been resolved at this particular point, we're still waiting on the school district to come back. So to me, I would rather see saying, here's what we project we're getting, and here are the items priority-wise that we see we need to do, and we figure out how we pay for those, whether it's the 200, what did you say it was, 215,000 dollars extra, or 512,000 dollars extra this year. We kind of set a policy, as I understand it, last year, on how those funds were going to be spent. And we're still bringing it back now, counter perhaps to the policy that was set up, because I believe we, we talked about where any surplus money would go, and that was into the, the garage fund and into other specific issues policy-wise, and I'm, I, I've read through this, and I don't see any of that policy. So I, I kind of think we're going about this wrong, and I'll, I'll end it at that.
So yeah, as we get through the rest of the presentation, I'll go over a couple of recommendations that will close the gap, and then at the very end, I'm going to have each department go over their budget, and they, we've all taken a look at our budget, and we're, we've analyzed and identified opportunities to further reduce costs. I think that's kind of getting to what you're talking about, which is, how do we not just eliminate the gap, but really look at what we have available to spend and cut from there? So when, when we get to that point in the presentation, I'll hand it over to each department head, and, and we'll go through those, those items. So wanted to give kind of a snapshot, an overview of where we've been, just to kind of outline the fact that, you know, revenues consistently year after year after year for the past, well, this just shows five years, but if you go back seven years, it, every single year, revenues have exceeded expenditures. And in, in the current year, they're proposed to, right now, cross, but as I said, at the end of the day, we will adopt a balanced budget. So just wanted to drive home the fact that consistently, year after year, the council, along with city staff, has maintained good stewardship of city funds by keeping a balanced Looking at revenues, just a snapshot in terms of what we estimate for the preliminary 15, '16 budget, compared side by side with the amended budget, just wanted to point out that the three largest revenue sources, property taxes, sales tax, and utility users' tax, in both years represent approximately, almost precisely, two-thirds of the city, citywide revenues. I'll go over in more detail about some of those revenue estimates. So since February, there has been some changes to the projections for revenue, and those changes include an increase in sales and use tax revenue, due to an increase in fuel and service station sales, a $70,000 increase to red light camera revenue, which is comparable actually to the prior year. And along with a couple of other items as well, we've included an estimate for the contribution from other agencies for the sharing of costs related to crossing guards, an increase in estimated, estimated utility users' tax revenue. And of course, with the adoption of the changes to the investment policy, an increase in estimated revenue due to that change. And then we've also included a decrease in parking meter revenue, based on the assumption that what we've built into our budget is the, the assumption that the parking meters may not be in place until October 1st. I think we're shooting for an August 1st start date, but conservatively have budgeted for, for an October 1st start date. And then also, lastly, a decrease in gas tax revenue, in terms of the amount that's transferred to the city's general fund, based upon a, a reduction by the state to the, the amount that's set, the tax that's set per gallon. I just wanted to add a little more detail and commentary to the parking meter revenue, and wanted to outline that we are, you know, shooting, like I said, for an August 1st start date, which was outlined in our request for proposal. And since the project is so fluid, the parking meter revenue, like I mentioned, that's been built into the budget, it's based upon a, a start date of October 1st. And so, in fact, the budget assumes that we have 208 spaces, and, and those spaces would be used 46% of the time, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, which we feel is, is very conservative, considering the fact that there could be as many as 320 spaces, as outlined in the request for proposal. And also, we've not built in any parking meter fine revenue, so, which would likely result from the enforcement of these new spaces. So therefore, we feel very comfortable that the 187,500 that's been built into the preliminary budget is a solid, yet conservative estimate.
Is that net revenue?
That's just gross. Those expenditures on, on the expenditure side. So now looking at expenditures, this is a, an overview of the increase, a million-dollar Just kind of a recap in terms of what we've been discussing over the last couple of months, general fund expenditures are projected to increase approximately 1 million. That includes 162,000 of one-time costs and an increase of 288,000 in retirement costs. We've discussed that, we've had the actuary out twice, and, and so we've built that into the budget. We've also have a 181,000 dollar increase in insurance costs related to workers' compensation and general liability. And then, of course, a 62,000 dollar one-time cost associated with anticipated police department vacation payouts.
I think that's potentially a policy discussion. I realize that we've solved all of our relationship problems with our employee groups for four years. If that's an issue item, or if that's an item that needs to be built into that process, I would like to see us somehow do some further study and comparisons. There are some areas where they can't build, add, and fin them in terms of sick leave time and vacation time, and they can only bank so much. Where we're looking at, at some of the payouts that are, that are there, I would sure like to have us have a policy discussion before we get into further employee negotiation things, so that we try to curtail some of that cost. I know there are benefits, but they're not comparable to what the private industry does, and I'd sure like to see us consider some change.
Just to recap on some discretionary costs that have been, been built into the base budget, we have 125,000 dollars built in for capital replacement charges, based upon the council's direction and adoption of the fund balance policy adopted on September 8th. And we've also built in 100,000 dollars of estimated capital costs for the new parking meters. And in addition, we've built in the incremental cost to convert the support services manager position into a second police captain. And then also, lastly, we've built in 30,000 dollars for two part-time parking attendants, which is offset, offset by parking meter revenue.
So as part of the ad hoc group, I just would like to add, Mayor, if this is okay? So to address your point that you made at the very beginning, which is, you're not super sassy. So to address your point that you made at the very beginning, which is you're not supersatisfied with the process and we'll take responsibility for that on our side, is that if you'll notice up here, basically, the big picture at the very beginning was, hey, we have a $210,000 deficit. And your point is, hey, let's just lay the cards on the table and try and work through it and see where we're at. We tried to do that right here in these two slides. If you go up one slide, it says discretionary versus nondiscretionary. And what we were really trying to do is make sure that, look, there's things we could have great ideas about, but we can't do anything about specifically. That $62,000 for the police department was a union contract that we signed that's potted and done for this year. The policy longer term, absolutely, we could have discussions on it. But we just, look, right there, you know, $300,000 or $400,000, I won't say unexpected, the first one definitely was not expected, but, and then you'll see the next page when you go to the discretionary where now you have, you know, that these are things that we should talk about. And Rich and I didn't feel that it was our place to make a decision and just say, hey, we wanted to show you exactly, here's the ones that you really have choices on collectively you, we, through the council process. Some of them look easy, no-brainer to us even in the ad hoc, but we did not put that recommendation forward. We thought it was more important that the council talks about it and sees everything, you know, so that you guys could kind of see. So I just wanted to insert that here because this, I think what you can see too is that one-time cost on the previous one, which we don't have to go back, but is definitely one of the hardest things is that additional PERS cost. It nailed us. The other thing that I'm really sensitive to, and I think Rich too, we're both, you know, the fact is that we had some upside this year. And something that we should think about is looking at our problem this year, coming ahead and see, is there stuff from forward that we should buy ahead? Because, you know, life's unfair, we get hit with the PERS hit, we can complain about it all we want, but the reality is, we had some upside this year that we didn't anticipate. And the last thing I want to say is if you go back three charts to the X-Y plot that shows, you know, that the council on page eight, if you can take the presentation back to page eight real quick, how this council has consistently been able to hit our budget numbers is we press ourselves on the revenue and then we make, we respectfully request that the city spin below the rev line. We need to continue that practice in 2015, 16. And the ad hoc committee didn't want to come and just say, hey, we solved it. Because we've done that a couple times and you even declared, I think one year, that Troy, Rich, this was your budget. So you get to own this one. So I'll stop there, but I just wanted to kind of lay all the pieces on the table. That's kind of what we were hoping to do.
How do you get that we're balancing the budget?
No, we're not yet. No, we're at, if you, green line up till this year, revenue above expenditures, right? You hit that because we constrain revenue, even though we want to overestimate it so we could spend up to that level. We constrain revenue and focus on expenditures and staff does their job and they always do. The last year, it doesn't look good, but it doesn't look good because we've got regulatory and compliance issues with PERS that we can't anticipate. You need to help us make that decision. We didn't want to make it for you. Thank you. Okay, so you're.
Just to highlight in terms of some of the changes, in terms of the expenditures that have changed since February, these are just the list of the significant changes that have taken place. Workers' compensation premiums actually increased 23% and liability premiums increased 11%. The preliminary budget assumed a 3% increase. This was a pretty substantial hit. On the flip side, the amount that we pay to CalGPAIA for the, what's called the retrospective, it's a look back at the premiums, they gave us a reduction in what they were preliminarily proposing to charge to us. And so that provided us with $127,000 of savings. And then of course, we've built in to the budget a salary savings vacancy factor, which we think is realistic. And so that's been built into the budget as well. And so finally, the potential budget gap is 210,000. And we have a couple of different ways that we could potentially go about closing that gap. In fact, that would provide for a small surplus. One of those would be using the surplus in the current year to actually prepay the capital replacement charges for 15, 16. And in fact, I think staff would recommend that the entire surplus in 14, 15 be used to set aside funds, like you mentioned, Dean, for vehicle and equipment needs. And we also have substantial police department capital expenditure needs upcoming in the future with CAD RMS and the 800 megahertz system. We're also recommending the financing of the capital component for the estimated cost to purchase the parking meters. I say that and we just issued the request for proposal for the parking meter program and we haven't received responses back yet. Once we receive those responses, we'll actually know whether or not the parking meters can be financed and if so, what the terms and conditions would be. So once we have more information, we'll bring it back to the council for consideration in terms of whether or not it makes sense to finance it. It may, it may perhaps make more sense to use reserves to pay for that investment. But we'll bring that back to council once we have a little more information. And then of course, prepaying PERS would provide $20,000 of savings. So before I go into details about having each department talk about reduction, potential reductions in costs, did you guys have any questions about this slide?
Have we had discussion, excuse me, Mayor?
No, go ahead.
Have we had discussion on what the 15, 16 capital replacement charges are of the $125,000? And were those included with this year's budget? And you're asking to pay, I'm sorry, next year's budget, you're asking to pay them in advance with the surplus.
Right, the budget that has been reflected in the previous slides includes the capital replacement charges directly to each department. That's the way it's accounted for. So their departments have been hit with those charges and that's why it's causing, it's part of that million dollar increase, that part of the million dollars includes $125,000 of charges. So if we prepay it out of the current year, the current year surplus, we could take it out of the 15, 16 budget and it would provide for savings.
So Dean, the rationale with the ad hoc committee on that was that if we paid forward the, this tax, basically bought two years, our revenue line, if you'll notice, is going up 10% to 12% over the two to three-year period. And so we think the rev line starts catching up to start offsetting this problem we have with PERS. Because this is a direct hit to the departments, they, we basically reverse allocate that to them. We thought this would probably be an effective use of the surplus. The other thing I would say is that that fund, even though I'm not an huge fan of it, everybody is aware of that, the capital replacement fund for the automotive and all that, is the, the good news about this is that it's been significantly underfunded. It's, you know, as you know, Warren, we were trying to get it up to $1.2 million. At $40,000 a year is going to be like 50 years from now when we're ready to go. So I, again, I think Rich and I both thought this was a really good constructive way that staff brought forward to potentially, and it gives us two years to kind of settle after this PERS thing.
So the 125K is strictly in the vehicle fund?
No, the 700 megahertz, it's in ISF, so the special funds back. I don't remember specifically, do you, Rich?
No. You can read the list. It's all internal service funds.
Yeah.
They, okay, we're talking the.
So it's on this slide, it's the top one. Steve, that $35,000 for the police capital internal service fund, $40,000 for that new fund for, it's called facilities, streets, parks, and pool. And then $50,000 for vehicles and equipment. That's the breakdown of the 125.
Okay. Didn't we do this already for the 14, 15 year?
No, it was adopted by council to go into place in 15, 16.
And that's where my confusion comes in.
Because it was adopted after the budget was adopted in September.
I just had a couple real quick. The three budget gaps, those aren't in any type of priority because I'm kind of looking at them from the bottom up. The prepaying of PERS, that's kind of like a double dip. It's a budget gap, but, and it's a cost savings. That to me is a no-brainer. Anytime you can save money, that's great. The financing of the parking meters, there's a cost to that unless it's 0% interest, why would we save our free money that we have as a surplus and finance something that there's going to be a cost to eventually, maybe not this year, but eventually?
Because we're only making 0.25% on this money and we're going to pay over 3% to 6% on interest to finance the equipment. So it's just an arbitrage of like three or four. I don't remember, you haven't got the RFPs back, I should be fair, but I think that what the numbers you've given to us in the ad hoc, it looked like better use of idle cash.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not kind of robbing Peter this year to pay Paul next year and there's a cost of money that is going to kind of get lost in the shuffle of this capital acquisition.
Yeah, we just really, even though we changed our investment policy, you, we all did, the investment policy, we're still, you know, we've still got a long ways to go there.
Okay.
And once we do receive responses to the RFP, we will bring that back to council and we can talk about it further detail.
And those responses to the RFP will include the cost of money to finance?
Right. We've asked them to.
The other thing that's not in here, and we just want to let you know, we didn't put it in, when we talked through this, was that we are bringing forward through the ad hoc, the refinancing of Laurel Park, the certificates of participation, that would be about $28,000 a year to refi. We didn't record any of that because we don't know the timing and the appetite of the council. Yeah, but that's another potential upside down the road.
We could do that for another year.
The issue, yeah, but the earliest I think was September at the best.
We could do it now. The issue is that since the old bonds are technically not callable until September of 2016, they would sit with a trustee and we would actually have to pay interest on those bonds at the same time that we'd be paying interest on the new bonds. And so you're effectively paying interest twice. And so there's kind of negative arbitrage, about $8,000 of cost every month. So while we would still save 500,000 over, you know, the remaining 21-year period of time, we could save theoretically more, $8,000 more each month if we wait and get closer to that September date. The risk though is if long-term interest rates rise, it could actually reduce that $500,000 savings. So we're, we have our consultants that are monitoring the market and they're trying to advise us on the most opportune time to jump on it and realize the savings.
So it's not in here now because the call for the bond is not in this coming fiscal year, it's in September of?
2016.
Right, so, okay.
So at this point, I'll, I'll take a few minutes to talk about some budget potentials savings that would affect the city manager's office, the city clerk, and then administrative services. I wanted to first point out that our departments amount to $1.2 million of expenditures, but salaries and benefits take up 957,000 of the 1.2. And so the remaining 300,000 is made up of non-personnel-related items like contractual services. In fact, over half of the 300,000 is, includes committed, you know, required services, like we have the animal control contract with the county. We also have, you know, audit services that we have to pay to have an audit. And so, but nonetheless, our department has gone through and we've identified several opportunities to cut costs. One is actually by creating a new position called special projects coordinator, we could actually realize savings on, by taking certain tasks and responsibilities in-house. So this would be a part-time, non-benefited position that we would utilize eight to 16 hours a month. And this person could work on, you know, the state controllers report, for example, which we would, normally would pay a contractor to perform at over $100 an hour. This person could perform it in-house at a lower rate and we could save $2,000 to $3,000 of savings. And this person could also help out with other special projects in the department. There's a departmental need. And it would also help with some concerns raised by the auditors. We've had, we had a finding, if you remember, related to segregation of duties or the lack thereof. So this extra position would not only create budget savings of a couple thousand dollars, but also solve a need in terms of segregation of duties.
Is that a slide that's in our packet?
Say that.
Is that a slide that's in our packet?
No, I'm just verbally giving a report on opportunities that we've identified in terms of closing the budget gap or further reducing. It's just.
Again, the verbal detail bothers me because there's no real written material. We're going to go through apparently each department in here based on attachment or yeah, attachment to. Why don't we have a copy of that?
I just thought it might be helpful to go over it verbally.
Then we need a copy.
Okay.
At least I do.
Okay. Should I continue with the discussion or postpone it? I'll continue.
You go ahead, you think, yeah? You go ahead with the discussion.
Okay.
I just think you should be providing us with a copy of it.
Okay. So we've also looked at copier expense and we've gone through a request for proposal process and we've actually, we sought out many vendors through that process and we were able to get a very competitive pricing that we're planning to bring to council in June. We'll have about $3,000 of savings just on two copiers, which affects our three departments, city clerks, city manager, and administrative services. We're also looking at trying to, we all have the same lease, lessor, and so we're looking to see if we can get on the same five-year term and five-year sequencing and seeing if they will actually provide the same rate that they're, that they've offered for the current lease. And so we may actually be able to realize more than just the $3,000 of savings in our budget as well. One thing that we've looked at in terms of a potential way to save money is we've looked at the cost to publish and print bound budget books and CAFER books, the comprehensive annual financial report. So if we were to not bind and print fiscal reports, but just refer to everyone to the documents that are available online, we could save about $800 a year. And if someone actually requested a physical printout, we could just run it through the copier machine and just hand them a printed document. It wouldn't be bound in any sort, but we could still provide that to them. And then as you guys mentioned, we may have some savings in terms of debt service associated with the refinancing, but we just haven't built that into the budget. We don't know what that will be because we're trying to time the market in terms of realizing the most savings and, but potentially 12,000 to 24,000, but conservatively, we've left it out at this point. And so at this point, I, I'll turn it over to please to have them go through.
Could we take this for a five-minute break before they get started?
Yeah. Okay.
We'll quit babbling over here.
So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to police department to go through their department and then we'll just, I guess, go on to recreation and then community development and public works.
Jason, I have one quick question on the potential savings that you did for your area. Do you have a guesstimated maybe total amount of realized savings, just so we can kind of do a little bullet point from each department?
About, about 6,600.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah.
I'm following you.
How much?
6,600, 6,600. That excludes the debt service savings. So we could include that, which would be 12,000 to 24,000. If you directed us to say, you know what, go after that, we could go after the full $24,000 of savings. If that's what we're interested in is capturing as much savings in the current year and not necessarily trying to maximize that full potential, we could do that and that would capture in 24,000 and we can get the deal closed by August in time before our first debt service payment is due in the next fiscal year. Or if you say, you know what, let's wait and see and look at the market and time it just right, we could do that as well. And maybe only have $12,000 of savings or zero, depending on when it makes most sense.
So we either need to do it now or wait until March?
Yeah, so we have debt service due on September 1st and March 1st, so twice a year. So if we wanted to realize the most savings in the fiscal year of 15, 16, it would have to be done before September 1st, probably two weeks before. to be done before September 1st, probably two weeks before. And so sometime, probably August 1st would be like the latest. And then if we miss that window, the next payment is due on March 1st. So we would need to have the deal closed probably by February 1st and we would realize maybe half the savings, 12,000.
Okay, thank you.
So Shelley, though, I will say this. So we're doing the COP for a total of how much?
It's 2.9 million.
2.9 million, so the risk of whether it's, you know, I think what we're, on the ad hoc, we're going more towards September just to get it done and to get it out of the way because the potential pushing it into the year to hope that we're going to do better with the interest rates just seems.
It's not, yeah.
I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money for this, you know, the sand district, we were doing $100 million COP adjustments every year and we were really trying to time it perfectly so that you don't have to make these extra payments. It just seems like it would be easier to give staff direction and march towards the maturity point before the period.
Right, because it doesn't sound like if we're going to do it, it's when we're going to do it, so let's just go ahead and do it.
Yeah, that's kind of what we were.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. So your two bullet points for 6,600, though?
Yeah.
What were they again?
It's three, actually. So copiers.
Copiers.
Which is 2,800.
Yeah.
And then it was 3,000 for taking in-house responsibilities, you know, contractual services, so that's 3,000. And then, oh, and then the budget CAFER books, about 800.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, no more delay, chief. You're finally going to get your time.
I'm ready to go.
We've introduced you six times already.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. You know, over the last several years, we've looked at our budget and offered and made cuts where it wouldn't significantly impact our services. And per the direction, we looked at our budget again this year and identified a few things that we, that we could cut. However, they, they each come with impacts. So I'm not, I don't offer up any of these with any, any excitement because they certainly will sting. But as you see up there already, it's listed as a discretionary cost is the, the cost to add a second captain. We could, we could eliminate that plan and stay with status quo with our support service manager. And obviously, we would not be able to reap the benefits of what we explained, you know, a couple months back when we proposed that, that model in the first place. But if we did that, that would save about $75,000. We could also reduce our part-time police aid hours by about $9,500. As you know, our police aides provide a valuable service that's very important to our operation. We might have to look at perhaps reducing our, our counter time because we would expect that to, to have an effect on our efficiencies. And then lastly, one other item would be the elimination of our school resource officer. We all know that, you know, it's been a very effective program that's, you know, that we, we often hear from the school district and the community how well that's been accepted, but it is not a core service. We could eliminate that and our 50% share of that is about $80,000. And, and that represents what we could offer up for the, for the, to close the gap.
So I'm a little confused on the captain and going back to where we were, I vote against doing that, but I thought we did it.
We did.
So how are we going to undo it?
Well, I don't, I don't think he's, I don't think the chief's recommending to undo it. I think, I mean, this shows everything's on the table. The departments are looking very deep to, you know, nothing is sacred, especially that and the SRO officer. I mean, you know, chief's kind of doing what we asked and, you know, we're going to bring it back and see if there's any of these that make any more sense than what the other items. You know, I think the mayor had said something a couple of meetings ago where he said, hey, what if we did just a 1% hit across the board and you just told you guys to go and do it? I think staff came back and if I'm telling history wrong, Brett, correct me, but staff came back and said, no, let us go specifically back and see, we don't want to do any of these things. You know, we hope that we have other options, but this, this is kind of some of the stuff that we're looking at now, so.
Yeah, I should have introduced this a little bit better and just explained that we did ask what cuts, you know, what cuts would look like. They're, they're great in theory, you know, lop off 2% sounds really nice and especially from the county point of view, hey, 2%, what's 2%? But then, you know, we were asking, that's what, each department, what does that 2% cost us? So, you know, what, what does it mean to us? That's what, really what we're trying to do here is, because we do, we do have choices, they're just, when you get down to it, there's no good choices. So are you finished?
I am.
Okay. Corey, are you next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So just like the other departments, we looked at all of our programs in recreation, community services and the easiest way for us to look at it without to have a net reduction in our department is to look at all of our programs that are not direct cost revenue offset. Obviously, there's overhead, just like most things, but the vast majority of the programs that we offer and classes and activities that we offer produce equivalent revenue or excess revenue from what our direct costs are. So the programs that, that I'm going to present to you are not revenue offset. So one is the holiday banners. That's to the tune of $3,500 and those are the, the 44 banners that go up between November-ish and come down around January-ish. Our park programs, that's about $25,000 that runs 10 or 11 weeks during the summertime. It's a free drop-in program for the neighborhood kids at Little Cottonwood Park and Orville Lewis Park.
I'm sorry, how much is that again?
It's just under 20, it's about $25,000. Our trunk-or-treat event is a net, because we do bring in a little bit of revenue for that event with sponsorships and, and some vendor fees. It's, it's about $2,700. That's our Halloween event. Our spring carnival, this year, we had a really good year with, with sponsorships, but we don't necessarily bank on that every year and that's a net of about $500. Like I said, we've been able the last few years to get a few thousand dollars in sponsorships for that event. So normally, it costs us about 3,500. We bring in about 3,000 routinely in, in revenue for that event. Our music and movie event series, that's about a $3,000 savings if we were to eliminate that. That's, we do four of those throughout the summertime, three at Laurel Park and one at the pool. Our senior lunch and bread program, it's about $8,300 in staff time. The actual program itself doesn't cost the city anything. However, there is some staff time, again, depending on the number of volunteers and the time that the volunteers are there. The staff does need to fill out paperwork and submit that. If we can't find competent volunteers and enough volunteers and obviously, some of them, the majority of them are retired, a lot of them go on vacations and if they get sick or injured or something like that, we sometimes, oftentimes have to backfill with staff. Something that we implemented this year was staffing our community center in the evening time. That's to the tune of about $17,000. We did that this year for safety. We've had some incidents at the community center with people being there who shouldn't be there, as well as contract instructors moving furniture and things of that nature. And we were just looking at the liability and wanted to make sure that, that our staff are doing those things and monitoring the facility while it's open. So we implemented that year. It's been very successful, a lot of positive feedback from the community as well as our instructors. And then another really difficult for, one for us would be to eliminate all of our senior programs and our liaison to the, the senior club and that's to the tune of $33,000. And that's all staff that assists our senior programs. Basically, would eliminate all city support for the Los Alamos Senior Club. So the expenditures, my, taking out the, the few thousand dollars in revenues that, that we do receive would be about $84,500 in savings. Again, these are all the programs that if we were to eliminate programs other than this, we would be significantly cutting our revenue as well, which would not do us a whole lot of good.
Okay. Thank you.
So I got a question. So part of this, now when I see all these that you've put on the table and the fact that it wasn't documented, meaning you guys didn't formally submit any of these, these almost don't seem real because these are, I mean, who would cut a seniors program over shutdown a pool? You know, I mean, so what is the criteria here? This almost seems like Armageddon versus, you know, you know, we always said for the last eight years, let's cut things, not people, and this goes into people right away. Are we at that level?
Yes. Like I said, we could cut other programs and classes, but we would be cutting revenue. Other than these, we would be cutting revenue in our department. So if I cut my contract class instructor, we would be getting rid of all of our contract classes because we don't have the staff to be able to support that, to put together our activities guide and our brochure. If I cut aquatics staff, there goes the aquatics program. And again, our aquatics program, we, it's about a 320 to 330,000 expenditure and about a 340 to 360,000 revenue. So we start cutting those types of things, same with our youth sports, our adult sports. Again, we cut those things and we're cutting into revenue significantly with our department.
So I, Jason, this is for you. I, I sat through all the meetings of ad hoc with, with the mayor. We've put offers on the table for discretionary and nondiscretionary cost reductions. Now we're getting to the sacred cow. What, I'm not sure I'm understanding how all this is fitting together. Are we at the level that we need to go, you know, total Armageddon or, you know, because it seems like it's manageable within this, but wait, there's more. We can go drastic, drastic. It seems like this, almost seems like an overreaction to what our budget problem is. And since I haven't seen any of this in the ad hoc, I'm, I'm a little bit surprised, so I just want to talk of it out loud with, with my colleagues.
It was my understanding that you were looking for approximately 2%. So I think that was our benchmark. We were trying to get to that. And the difficulty, you know, is that we've had a huge increase in retirement costs, you know, other increases in workers' comp and liability. So a lot of cost increases that are outside our control and really don't benefit the programs. So I think what we're getting to is to try to get to a 2% decrease, it's, it's going to start to cutting, cutting into bone, cutting into services.
Was the ultimate goal not to touch that $512,000 surplus, saying you can't use that to balance the budget at all? And that's why we're going, because we couldn't with the initial cost savings and ideas. So now we're trying to get, this is the worst case?
Shy, that is, I mean, let's go back to Dean's question. Remember the red bar goes over the green bar?
Right.
Bad. So our expenditures are over, so if we really believe on an ongoing basis that we need to stable over the revenue line, staff is coming back and saying, it's serious. And you can't buy operational costs forward forever. They're like an endless pothole. So we have a problem. I just, I guess I'm trying to, I mean, this is a pretty strong message to the council over and above what we said that we could do in bridge. This is a longer-term issue and this really is a quality of life problem.
Yeah, and this, and this is, that $512,000 does not exist. So we need to balance the budget and that, so this is, you guys came up with the three items of how we can get partway there. This is now by department items that we could to get to that $500,000.
Yeah, and I guess my question to staff is just, and I'm, we're just going in real time here because it's a little bit different than what I thought, was this almost, we tried to provide options to close the budget gap based on where we're at on an ongoing basis. And like I said, paying forward the garage fund, the garage fund discretionary, totally something that we control every year. It used to be a little thing Warren and I had a lot of fun with in the past, but the reality is that's something controllable, we just underfund the garage fund. This is, let's take away services forever that took a long time to establish, the communities come to expect. That's pretty significant and severe. And my confusion is, are we at this level for this budget or do our recommendations that were part of the presentation enough?
I, I think the recommendations in the presentation are enough and the budget gap is actually 210,000. So it's not, the 512 is actually the surplus in the current year.
Right.
And so the 210 is the deficit currently in the current year, which includes the increase in the capital replacement reserves of 125,000. That really is the only piece on top of the financing of the parking meters that is kind of a carve-out that we're saying to take out with the caveat that it's going to be really prefunded using the current year surplus. So, so, so no, it's, it's not necessarily, it's not Armageddon, but, and some of the items that we are putting in front of you, I think, are, are good ways to cut costs. They just, they're not going to get you huge savings, but we still, we're trying to get towards that 2% threshold. And so I think because of that directive, you are seeing some harsher cuts, especially in recreation and police where they've been, been holding costs back. And so at this point, to achieve that 2%, it takes a more severe reaction.
And I also think, just looking at this, you know, staff is right now doing exactly what we asked them to do. And we're looking at Corey's group point, oh, we can't do that, but, but his department has the most face in the community. So don't cut the Easter egg hunt, but to, you know, cut the, the printing of the budget documents, nobody's going to be passionate about that. It's just like, well, it's, you know, so it's like, I think they're doing by department what we asked them to do and then we need to come back and saying, thank you very much, but no, we're not even going to consider that. But, you know, some of this administrative daily operation stuff that isn't going to affect the quality of life for everybody, yeah, that makes some sense. So I think, you know, yes, it is Armageddon, but then it's up to us to say, we're not going there.
And to be clear, none of this is being proposed.
Right.
It's really just what would a cut cost, what would a cut look like?
Right.
So, so we really know what we're, because Dean did mention, you know, we do look at it from a different point of view. We come up with what we're going to spend first and then try to catch up. But if you are looking at what you're going to spend, this is what cuts would look like. So that's, that was a real purpose.
You know, just looking, and I'm sorry, I didn't pull the page up when we were talking to, in regards to police, but just looking at the summary page here, the budget for 1213 was 1,888,587. In 1314, it dropped to 1.6 million. In 1415, it went back up to 1.7 million, estimated to fill, estimated to end at about 1.7 and they're asking for 1.97 on department total for 1516. And based on that, they've outlined that they're going to spend 1.97 million. So their department summary expense and, and broken down, it's about a $200,000 increase, not quite, but about a $200,000 increase over where 1415 is expected to end. So I'm not sure the, the 3,300 on banners and 2,500 on park programs and, and the nickel and dime stuff here. If they're saying that they're expecting 1917, 642 as the expense side of it, it really doesn't, that one doesn't really get into the revenue side of things. But it seems like there's a $200,000 approximately, just shy, increase over the way the current year's supposed to end. Now, is all of that laid at the feet of PERS?
A significant portion is, if you look on the next page after that budget summary page, it's recreation administration.
Right.
And you'll actually look at the retirement line.
Right.
It's a count of 5150 and you do see approximately $70,000 increase and that just doesn't. increase, and that's just that one division alone.
Okay. So, I get that. It's showing, just as a, as a point, the fourteen-fifteen adjusted budget on dues and subscriptions is twelve-hundred. Proposed for fifteen-sixteen is thirty-one-hundred on that same page. So, to me, the expense part of things tend to be where controllable judgments are available. They're looking at tuition costs increasing by five-hundred. A lot of it is, you know, right comparable to what it is this year. There's a decrease on maintenance of office equipment from seventy-five-hundred to twenty-six. There's a facility capital replacement of twenty-three-thousand-two-eighty-four. What is that?
That's the new capital.
That's the one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand allocated to each division.
For what?
The facilities capital replacement charge.
Okay.
It's what council approved in September twenty-fourteen. It's to fund the capital needs for facilities, parks, pool.
It's actually the slide you have up there.
There you go.
Well, some of the discretionary, some of the stuff that's not discretionary, the PERS amount, salary amount, we're going on the retirement from fifty-three to a hundred-and-twenty. You know, we're kind of at that point. In the past, it's been things, not people. If we're going to continue to pay that kind of costs, and it's reflective from the standpoint of what we are doing, what are we, what are we thinking from a council standpoint is a solution to that? Is that contracting stuff out? And going with contracting rather than where we're looking at the high, high benefit costs? There, he's asking for a part-time administrative position as a part-time cost, no benefits, no retirement. So, what positions in parks and recreation can be contracted that eliminate that? And what does that do from the standpoint of labor relations and everything else? But, I mean, these are, to me, these become some of the hard decisions that we're having to make. We're still paying for these Cadillac retirement plans, which were built into all of the negotiations over the last several decades. You know, in order to maintain the quality of life, we got to figure out how to do it less expensively. And, and that's part of where, to me, some of this issue is, just don't say two percent across-the-board cut. You know, the same thing like we talked about with the police captain, you know, another seventy-five-thousand more with a sworn position over the civilian position. And, and in reality, from a time standpoint, the decision was not to try and replace that in that particular fashion. And, and I'm not picking on any one department. I'm trying to say wherever we are, if there's, we did this in, in Public Works by eliminating the maintenance of lawns, of greens, by contracting. And in theory, save some money in the process. So, to me, just simply saying to the, to the department heads, come back with a two percent, they're going at the jugular stuff, the things that they know people will not appreciate. We went through that once before when we eliminated banners. We eliminated the, the ban on the park, I think it was called in those days, and eliminated the other programs, and they figured out how to bring them back, but they're still associated with cost. My hope at that time when they were eliminated was that we could find a way to bring in some type of a sponsor. And I go back to UCI used to do a summer music festival where Irvine Company footed the bill on the thing, but they brought in top-notch entertainers and paid them, and didn't cost anything from the standpoint, it was a free program to the community. Well, you've got Cypress that does the same thing and do more programs than we do. You've got Seal Beach that does the program at the beach down at Edison Park down there, I want to say, every Wednesday night.
Their concerts?
Uh-huh.
That's by the Chamber of Commerce.
Is the Chamber and probably the Lions Club. I mean, are those, are those the kinds of things? Are we to a point where we need to look at some type of community program where we provide the facility and we partner with neighbors? Rossmore does the same thing with the movies in the park that we do. You know, does everybody need to do one? Or do we look at it from a community standpoint and figure out how we can help in the cost aspect of things? I'm just throwing something out. I'm getting, I'm getting stares, so I don't know if I'm.
And if I may, we do go seek sponsorships for those. For, for the Spring Carnival, for example, AYSO sponsored to the tune of two-thousand dollars. The Long Beach Table Tennis gave us five-hundred dollars. The New York Club and Los Alameda Seniors gave us another five-hundred dollars. We charged for vendors. So, we recouped most of our money, if not all of our money, for that event. The hard part is, we're, we're competing for sponsorships. We ask for sponsorships for everything. This year alone, I think we're getting close to the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar mark that our department has raised in sponsorships. It's just hard to count on that time and time again. For music and movies, Ron just secured, I think, two-thousand dollars from Friday Night Lights. We're out there, you know, pounding the pavement, trying to get every organization, nonprofit, to give us money as much as possible. We give them the exposure, we give them the credit. Right now, I'm working with Southland Credit Union to renew their sponsorship for the race. So, you know, when, when these programs were eliminated from the budget several years ago, our department took that on ourselves to bring them back and get them fully funded through donations and sponsorships. And we would continue to try and do that. And since then, we've, we've put back in some additional costs in order to, to relieve the, the lack of staff out there to manage the programs. But, we would continue to do that.
I think that's fine, but I mean, when you're coming in saying, well, if we've got to make two percent, here's the things we'll make two percent on. And in reality, those things are, are funded through the sponsorships, for the most part. So, it's not an elimination if it's funded outside. It's like your programs are funded by participation, and if you don't get enough people in that program, you cancel the program. So, it's almost the same thing. I'm looking at where some of your hardcore dollars are and your hardcore expenses are. How do we get creative on those to help minimize some of that increase in costs? Because, you know, just, just on salaries and benefits, and again, recognizing the PERS issue, you're going from five-eighty-eight ninety-five for estimated year-end in fourteen-fifteen to seven-thirteen forty-six. And so, that's where a hard number is. How do you, what do we do to control that? What other options are there to control that? And, and I recognize some of it is not controllable because of the PERS thing and so on. But if Public Works partners out something and saves money on just mowing the green, if you will, then what can be done there? And I, I'm not in favor of having to get rid of staff. I mean, we've, I think that's been the same thing. But we're getting to a stage where can we continue to afford all of this stuff that's going on? We've, we've had discussions relative to law enforcement. At what point do we peak from the standpoint of what we're doing? And then we have to do a Stanton model where we go back and ask for a one-percent increase in sales tax to do nothing but fund public service or public safety. And, you know, I, my belief is the community would support it. I didn't think Stanton would. They did. But it's the same kind of a situation. Fifteen sixteen is one thing. We don't know on sixteen seventeen, but it's probably not going to be any, any different than where we are right now in terms of the increases. It just seems like, from a policy standpoint, we need to be starting to think about alternate methods, because all we're going to do is hit those things that people like and feel and touch from the standpoint, especially parks and recreation.
And I, I look, I don't see we're at a budget cut point at the, I think the ad hoc committee came and they gave us some ideas to balance the budget. And then we've also asked staff to do their due diligence. I don't think we're nearly at hitting the jugular, you know, parking wreck, that's going to have the most, you know, visibility.
Does it, yeah.
But if we're going to do that, and I'm going to throw myself under the bus with my own neighborhood right now, but why aren't we looking at the thirteen-thousand dollars in increase for fireworks this year? Why is that not on this list? You know, is, what does that do? You know, I'd much rather look at that than even looking at cutting anything into public safety, because to me, that's more important, but we're not addressing that. You know, why aren't we, do we need to? We might not need to. We might look at this and say, you know what, we've got to balance budget. The ad hoc committee did their job with staff. We're balanced. We're going to dip into our surplus a little bit, and we're going to pay it forward for some stuff. We're looking at future things, but I don't think we're at that jugular. I don't think we're at the, the sky is falling yet.
Well, I would tend to agree with you. You know, and it's because this year came in better than expected. So, there are revenues that exceeded that green and orange line that made things match. As I said, to me, it's frustrating to start with what we want and hope to figure out a way to catch up to it revenue-wise. If we know what we're projecting revenue, then we budget to that revenue. And we have a side list of the things that we want to be able to do, but just can't justify it.
See, and I always look at what I want first, and then I'll figure out how to get there.
Well, that's.
But, but, so we just.
That's why you go shopping and I go buy.
Right. Right. But we, but we have a disagreement on philosophy, but ultimately is, what's going to affect the, the community in the biggest way? And, you know, I just, I don't know. And we do have future revenues looked at, like the parking meter, they've projected that very conservatively. The refinancing of the bond, that's not a future revenue, but it's a future cost saving. So, I think absolutely we're looking into sixteen-seventeen already and putting some things into place that we're going to come back here and say, right on, guys, we have another budget surplus. We don't have to cut. And I think we're doing a real good job of putting those things into place.
I just wanted to add one thing about the pension cost. The increase, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars in the, in the next year, is actually entirely attributable to benefits earned already, which means if you contracted out the entire city, you would still have to pay the increase in costs, and you have to continue to pay the full six-million dollars owed to CalPERS. So, that's just something to consider.
But, that's part of, that's part of the issue that I'm saying. We, we didn't start this soon enough from the standpoint of doing that. These are fixed costs going into the future. And unless they can figure something out on how to adjust it, you know, Wall Street becomes much better than it is, and they start getting more money back in. And I think the voters and the people in the public understand that, that they're just extremely frustrated with the benefit packages that have been awarded in the past, and they don't want to see it continue. So, bringing in and adding positions, in my mind, is continuing that same thing. Even though we've made some adjustments in the process, and there's two, two tiers in that process going forward, we just, every time a position comes in, we need to be able to look at it closely and, and really say, is this what we have to do? I, I don't think we need to be cutting either.
So, Jason, just to finish, I guess we were, we're moving off of Cory.
Yeah.
Is there any left before we, Steven, huh?
There's the intro. Speaking of contracting, as you know, Public Works has an opportunity and operates out of a number of different contracts, including traffic engineering, traffic signal maintenance, engineering services as well. Council may recall that we're out to bid right now on these very services, and within the next month, you'll have all those proposals in front of you that gives you a chance to negotiate for lesser or more or greater in service and lesser in cost. We see the opportunity for savings in both of the three areas. In Public Works, there'll be two areas, city engineer and traffic engineer. And in community development, we see an opportunity for building and safety savings with the other proposals that we have. I've seen those proposals. There are some opportunities, but it'll take some interaction with the city council in looking at those proposals. And maybe lowering the hours in, in, in the building counter and only have morning hours for the building department, which we really don't think will have an impact upon the public. I think steering the public towards those open hours of the morning could certainly be beneficial for providing services, and we, we can get the, the public used to that. And I don't think that's a severe cut. Now, in city engineering, we can do that better by having the traffic engineer work with the traffic commission more than the city engineer. So, I think there's also some savings because they earn at a lesser rate. And I, so I think there's some savings in there. And also, you know, Tony won't like to hear this, but Tony and I take a greater role with the traffic commission now that I'm not working on the general plan anymore. So, we see some of those opportunities coming before the city council in the next month. There are some solid savings, though, to achieve in, in community development. You'll see a line item in the planning function that has forty-thousand dollars for next year for contractual services. We intended that money to be towards the changes. Now that the general plan's in place, we planned on doing some work to align the zoning code with the general plan and doing those zoning changes. Many of those zoning changes can be done by staff, less on consultant, and also less on the attorney time. We'll work to tighten that up. We'll be writing some, more of the resolutions and ordinances on those. And then also, we can delay the, the visual or the map part of it, of the zoning map. We can put that off a year and not draft that until we're done with all these zoning changes that are required in the general plan. And we could push that off a year. So, we would take that forty and reduce it down to about twenty thousand and save some money there. We don't think that would be a hit to the public there. So, because we're already semi-contract, we have that ability of negotiating those contracts.
Any numbers on the city engineer and?
None that I could talk about right now, because it is out to bid, and I, it would be unfair to share all of that publicly until we have a staff report in front of you.
So, the increase on park maintenance from fourteen thousand four-thirty to seventy-eight-thousand-seven-thirty-eight, is that, what? Is that the?
It's the addition of a park.
It's not a park. Okay.
It's a lot of maintenance for something that's not a park.
Yeah.
But, but we've all walked out there. We all know if that was in our backyard, it would take a lot of our time to maintain, and it does take a lot of staff time to maintain, especially in its infancy. We're hoping to redo that, reduce that level of staff time out there in year three and four of, at the, as the park's maturity. And as you know, in order, instead of adding staff for the park, what we did was move our staff over to the park in its infancy and entered into an agreement to mow center medians and parks. So, we could also reduce that at a later date, because that's a contracting staff. We won't have to lay, do layoffs. We won't have to reduce staff on that level that comes in, in the future. So, we are, we operate in a hybrid of contracts and staffing in, in our two divisions.
Almost a bit straight across. So, I mean, that's, that's the one area where there's a big jump.
Yeah.
Any other speakers lined up, city manager?
Okay. Are we going to talk about council and administrative now?
Go ahead and understand, Jim.
Are we going to talk about the council and administrative?
So, Brett, do you have a random list that you might have thrown together that's not published?
Well, I'm seeing the same, I'm seeing on city attorney, after we talked about that last year, that there's no change. And we've still dangled out a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars. There are increases in the manager clerk area. I'm worried about the across-the-board facilities capital replacement. I'm worried about the across-the-board facilities capital replacement. Is that money going into a restricted fund?
Yeah.
For the move?
No.
No, it's part of the hundred and twenty five, you're looking at the capital charge.
Yeah.
That vehicles, then?
There's a separate amount for vehicles, and that goes into the separate fund.
So what is facilities capital replacement?
Where it says it right there, facilities, streets, parks, and pool.
But that?
The forty thousand.
That forty thousand?
Relates to the four hundred thousand dollars you set aside last year?
Yes.
That's what it's for. It's to repay that once you start to use it, which we haven't dipped into, we haven't utilized.
I see. So are we doing the same thing, then, with the?
Seven hundred.
Seventy seven thou, or, yeah, the seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, the thirty five thousand for police.
And both of those, that thirty five thousand for police and the fifty thousand for vehicles, I mean, the recommendation from the budget standing committee to spend the one twenty five now out of the fourteen fifteen fiscal year anticipated surplus toward next year, we have the possibility of, you know, we do, if the council does want to use additional fourteen fifteen, staff would recommend, and through the budget standing committee, that continuing to increase both the vehicles and the police capital, as Jason had mentioned. I mean, both of those need additional funding in the future. So if there is an opportunity by council policy, we could use the fourteen fifteen to replenish those ahead of time even more, so.
So you guys are comfortable with the hundred and fifty six thousand on the city attorney? After we've had that discussion?
Discussion what?
Discussion that that's more than double what the contracted number is. We talked about reducing it down so that it wasn't such a high pinnacle number from the standpoint of hitting. We're not going to need as much regarding planning and that area that we have in the
Just to clarify on that, the planning came out of general plan, so that was four hundred and twenty nine thousand that had been set aside out of reserves at one time. And that money, now that the general fund, the general plan is complete, that money is spent. But that was a separate budget. That wasn't in the city attorney expenditures, but it was coming out of a different pot, that four twenty nine for the general plan.
I guess, just one thing to, I'll just give you the ad hoc perspective, and then Carrie, if you want to speak on behalf of your department. But, you know, city attorney fees are broken up into their retainer amount, which is a set amount of a five to, or six to, six thousand dollars a month. So that comes, you know, seventies, mid-seventies. And then the difference between that and above that, you have Westcom, you've got some of these other things that are out there. Then after that, after the retainer, then it's extra services. And so I think that as a planning number, we've looked bottoms up to be able to see if that would be good from a placeholder. This isn't a public service announcement for the city attorney. Out of the couple of years that we have had a retainer arrangement in place, I think there's only been five months out of twenty four that we've actually exceeded the retainer amount. You know, and I will say, you know, in the future, there's also an agreement in place that had locked in fees and percentages on the fees that potentially will be reevaluated at some point based on the contract. So those are pressures that are on that department right now. But I think at this point, the ad hoc, and I don't want to speak completely with Brett, because we didn't really prepare a statement on this part, but I don't think we were really focused on that.
Well, it's also, it's, we don't want to cut dramatically and then find out we need it. It's much easier to come back the other way for the fear that we'd spend it if we had it.
I don't think our goal with the city attorney fee is to use all that money. I think we need it as a placeholder, and we do our best not to spend it. But I agree with the mayor, is I wouldn't want to decrease that and then cut needed advice because we're exceeding budget and we're changing our behavior because of a dollar amount that we, a threshold that we've hit.
Understood.
Well, that seems like a perfect segue to go to speak to our lawyer in closed session.
Just let me just add one thing. So we're about ready to close this thing off. I don't want to send the wrong perception to the community if anybody was actually paying attention to all this. You know, this, the council has, and the staff have done a great job of getting the budget. You know, two or three objectives at the highest level, right? Stabilize the management, stabilize staff, make sure that our financials are predictable, and maintain service levels. And I think tonight, we started talking about lowering service levels as a concept, but the message of the community is we're not, you know, we're not looking at, we're just trying to see how close we are to that. So I think it's just really important, I really feel that we're in an inflection point where we, so there's been a lot of doom and gloom the last four or five years that the councils have had to navigate, and we actually, you know, we're starting to point in a very positive direction. We're getting some hits from unexpected, you know, Dean, and I don't think, you made this point, you made the point, but I just, I want to respond to it, is this wasn't something that we didn't sit back and plan for. This PERS hit, which is half of the increase of, and the reason why we, was totally unfocused. I mean, not city staff, we, and our reaction as a council, in a unified fashion, was to get the actuary out here, call them to the carpet, say, what the heck are you doing? We don't like your assumptions legislatively. We tried to look at, see if there's a way to influence it. They actually provided two or three ways around it. Again, the council, as a unified front, said, we're not going to mortgage for the future and take low payments now and three times as much over twenty years. We'll stick with where we're at. I think, again, this is a great story. I just think that right now, balance-wise, this budget is pretty solid, and I think that, you know, we have some good options to be able to go through. So again, I think the message, too, is that the community is really looking forward to the year. And if there's anything that I think that we should be focused on to spend an hour and a half at the end of the budget discussion would be, how do we grow revenue? We need to be talking about growing revenue, not putting more, the staff has demonstrated for the last X years how good they are at managing expenses. We need to find new ways, you know, to manage, to grow revenue. And that's, I guess, my message back, would be, please, you know, let's start focusing on that, too. You know, we had creative ideas a year and a half ago, some of them fell to the wayside, but I think, you know, we really need to get on that.
And Mayor Procham, I think we are. I think, you know, we've got some cost savings here that I'd love to highlight without any cuts. We've got some really good, you know, printing services and things that we could absolutely implement. And then we do have, you know, the Los Alamos beautification, that's a tool to be able to increase revenue by bringing in business, the parking meters. I think we're absolutely, we're changing the focus of the conversation rather than cutting to increasing, which is, makes everybody happy. So I think, I think we're in a good direction.
I think we are working to try and improve that revenue aspect as best we can. There's good news hopefully coming for the Boulevard in terms of some new development over there. Hopefully, the building on the other side over here will see the light and improve that. So, yeah, I mean, the biggest problem is, I don't like getting down and saying, what can we cut, and what's this for, rather allocating the money and letting it manage the best way, because it's not up to us to do that. It's up to us to be responsible to the citizens of the process. And I think staff's done a good job, department heads have done a good job of doing just
I'm sure we're here for it to discuss.
Yep.
So we're having all these budget meetings. All right, Carrie?
Hey. City council will now adjourn into closed session. The purpose of the closed session is to discuss initiation of litigation pursuant to subdivision D four of section five four nine, five six point nine of the government code, one potential case.
Thank you, everybody, for sitting through this. Hopefully had as much fun as we did.